I wanna talk about the reval and stuff. But just. So so I don't forget all that about mine.
Are you going to take mine or do I share?
Um.
Hmm duly noted.
Thank you.
Um I hadn't I didn't have any plans.
Okay. We can talk about it.
Okay. Ta-da. Okay.
Look at that, you can breathe for a second.
Sort of. Just don't take a deep breath.
Yeah, not too deep.
Okay.
What we got?
Bing.
Alright, seeing that's five o'clock, I'd like to open up the meeting. Could everybody please rise for a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah.
Good evening everyone. We got a uh action-packed agenda uh for everyone. We got so much going on in town it seems like, you know lately. Yeah. Different stuff that yeah, different things that don't cycle up with frequent so.
There is?
I don't know what you're talking about.
Uh we're gonna get a um some information from our DPW director, uh Peter Somro and then um we're also gonna have a presentation on the drawing down of Water Moon uh Pond at five thirty. Some roundtable discussion and a couple non-publics 'cause why not, right? Alright with that, Peter?
Uh yeah, so uh
You have the floor.
we have uh the new uh revised quote from Gemini to install a uh generator at the highway department and then the police department, the town office, and then the fire station.
Can I can I jump in just for a sec?
Yep.
So Peter and I talked to um Dave at Gemini about the whole big mess that was the generators and we kinda all got on the same page and so we asked him to redo the quotes. So the bottom number under each section is the new amount. Sorry Peter.
No, that's okay.
Okay.
So under the uh revised cost total is the the new number.
Yep, that's the new number.
Yeah. For uh each location.
Oh, okay.
So the um uh as far as the highway department goes, originally Peter Goey had suggested putting it in one spot but um Peter Somro realized that's where the leach field is so we can't put the generator on top of the leach field. So um they have to they're gonna move that a hundred feet so that is extra wiring and um conduit et cetera.
Okay.
And then we're gonna use the three generators that we got um from the surplus, the three free generators. The only one we're gonna purchase is the fire the only thing that's not changing anything is the fire station and
Yeah, that was the only thing.
Yeah, and the reason for that is because the the needs of the fire station, they already have propane there um and the generator that they ordered was like perfect for what they need so that one was not gonna change at all. And then one would go up to the PD, one would go here and one would go to the DPW. And we're gonna the one that's the um the one that's at building two powering right now, this building part of the DPW in the tower is gonna be disconnected from here and the DPW and it's just gonna do the tower.
Okay.
And then the one from here so that so we'll have more power more so for the EMD downstairs, you know, all the emergency equipment downstairs.
Yeah.
Um using one of the thirty kilowatt um generators. And then the forty is gonna go up to the PD.
Forty's going where?
PD.
To the PD.
So what happens with that is because there's four meters up there and it has four hundred amps coming in so you have to get the correct transfer switch
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
and we need e- even though the whole building probably, even if everything's on and and everywhere, it's probably only gonna maybe draw a hundred amps if that. But because of the service coming in, code says you have to um get the correct size transfer switch and whatever, so that's why the forty needs to go up there. Even though they probably it it's probably overkill but um. So.
Well, so he has a four hundred amp transfer switch
Yep.
and three one hundred generator disconnects, one hundred amp generator disconnects for power distribution, three hundred amp transfer switches. I guess.
'Cause they have to I guess it has to go from like the transfer switch and then each one has to go to a meter so you have to get the
Originally that building had um what, three or four different offices there, I believe it was three different offices.
Mm-hmm.
So you've got three um
It's just be because of the way it was originally set up.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
So you've got y- you know, since it's already pre-wired that way, uh you have to have your own have to have the power separated for each one of those.
Right.
So that way if we decide to move out and um and go somewhere else, that the building could be returned back to its original design.
Yeah, we we I'm sure Jeff wouldn't wanna pull out you know, and have only one meter going in or even two, you know, leave it as is. So if we do move out
Hmm.
someday, ten years from now. Temporarily.
Is that on record?
I know, right? Sorry. So and like I said, we just got this email, this quote, we talked to him on yesterday morning but he was out on out in the field and he just got it to us two minutes before I walked in here so I really I want what I my plan was to go through and look at the ARPA and
Yeah.
Capital Reserve and and say this is great but I I don't have the I didn't have the time to do that because of uh when he sent it to us.
Yeah.
'Cause I didn't even know I had it. If Peter walked in, he's like, oh, did you get it? And I'm like, I had four fifty-two he sent it. So um but I mean just looking at it, it's it doesn't seem to be like it would be an issue because all of the um where it says material and labor, that's all for electrical.
Mm-hmm.
So those um the trustees of the trust funds had said that they would we could use the electrical out of the GGB Capital Reserve
Mm-hmm.
for maintenance so and then we had allotted the seventy-seven so like I said, the fire isn't gonna change at all but the police can't remember the total that we allotted for that, maybe it was fifty-five thousand so that would um right just about pick up all the rest of the stuff. All the you know, the transfer switches.
Mm-hmm.
And the um
How much of
of the generators.
'Cause originally this was all gonna be funded through ARPA.
Mm-mm. Which originally we were we were doing the police and the fire through ARPA. Those were the two approved full amounts. And we were saying we could use the town office and DPW, we could pull that out of Capital Reserve. But then after talking to the trustees of the trust funds, they said that uh-uh, nope, a new generator is not maintenance so we need to find somewhere else to get that money. They would pay for the wiring though. So I that's why we had him split out the electrical part of the
Oh, so that's the portion.
Yeah, so the electrical portion is what would be approved by
So how much of this is coming out of ARPA? Is there any money left?
Yeah, so we already check I mean, yeah, we could actually use 'cause a couple of things came under budget on ARPA request so we could probably use more ARPA if we wanted to do that, either that or distribute redistribute it somewhere else. But the EMD um request from ARPA, he's only used half of what we because they still haven't installed the second half of everything. So that's another sixty grand, I think.
Alright, yeah, I'll have to look at that list.
Sixty-sixty. Yeah, I can't remember the numbers off the top of my head.
But naturally, you know, we'd utilize I think most of that money and then leave our um fund money, you know, as much of it left, yeah.
Yeah. Right. Yep, so I can look and see what we have left.
Mm-hmm.
What we allotted for who and how much has been spent.
That's totally, you know, significantly lower, that's for sure.
Yeah, yep.
One forty-nine, eight forty-five you get?
That's what I got.
Oh, not and we have one and we have one sixteen out of ARPA that we allotted, right? That that was the number we came up with Peter, one sixteen from ARPA, yeah.
No, Peter. Yeah, we had one sixteen.
Yeah.
So
It was seventy-sixteen.
So we're only have to come up with
And then I wonder what the Capital Reserve has, I don't 'Cause then you could take
There's a lot in Capital Reserve but we only have to come up with not the thirty
Is it really?
I think it was like over over a hundred.
Over hundred, yeah. So I mean, there's no issue as far as that goes but I mean, we can probably pull it we might even be able to hit pull that out of thirty-one or whatever it is out of ARPA as well.
Okay.
For 'cause things went under what we asked for, some of them haven't been used yet so
Hmm.
Have to reach out to the
Whoever we asked for, yeah.
people who are interested, yeah.
Say, use it or lose it. We need it.
Yeah.
So is the DPW able to handle all of these um excluded parts? Or is it side work?
Did you think that Jeff, I'm about to
All fuel and fuel connections obvious. All fuel connections.
So yeah, so that'll have to be under um our supplier. Like, you know, with our propane, we'll have to hook that up and deal with all that. So that'll have to just come onto GG.
Yeah. Well, that's diesel, they're all diesel.
Except for at the fire station.
Fire station but they already they're already hooked up to propane so they can they're just yeah, we just have to call Hafners and
Yeah.
run the propane, whoever Charlie Lee, whoever they get from.
So then it's
Yeah, yeah.
That's just a matter of some concrete pads to size this.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, we have to get pro- pro- we have to make concrete pads.
Yeah. So we have to prep for the pads and then dig the trench for the uh electrical and
Condom, yeah.
um
Is that something the DPW would be able to take on or?
Um, well not as easily as Jeff could do it because he's got like mini excavators and stuff like that that can do the job a lot easier than we can with the with like tobacco and stuff and get closer to the buildings and everything um.
So were you looking to get prices done there or?
Yeah, I was, yeah, yeah. So Dave is coming out on Thursday or actually um I gotta get ahold of him actually to see if he can come Friday and to align with Jeff's schedule to see if Jeff can and see if he can give me a price on what would cost to do all four locations. So uh
And then you'd have a scope of work and an idea of what you need done right after that meeting?
Yeah, yeah, because uh Jeff will show our um uh Dave will show us what's what's needed and what's going on.
Yeah. Alright.
Yep. And what the what the specs have to be for everything, so.
So. Well, since one of these involves your building, do you have anything that you wanted to speak on? Um in regards to the generator that is being proposed up at the police station?
Nothing, nothing necessarily here. Uh there was some question back and forth as far as if if my unit was gonna get hooked up as well or if it was just gonna be the police department. I last I heard it's just the police department.
We're hooking you up too.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. It's I mean, it's a tiny little office.
Yeah, we have a whole unit. Mm-hmm.
It's not like, you know.
Hmm.
So the way you can come take a read on this scope if you wanna
I mean
Yeah, we can probably we can chair and
The PD seven.
Mm-hmm.
So it's on that revised cost although there's still the s- some of the scope spelled out there.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so that would hook into yours too 'cause we were thinking like how much electricity is it really even gonna use that tiny little office for
Right. Right.
lights and heat.
Right.
I do see he's he does have on here that he's providing a generator precast pad, Peter?
You know.
Yeah, I I that's yeah, that they're, yep.
So we would just
Yeah, they have those pads, yep.
We wouldn't just um throw some throw some two-by-sixes down and scrape off some concrete?
Throw concrete, yeah.
No, no, not needed.
Well, no, I know it's not needed but is it, you know
Would it be cheaper for us to do that than get the pads from him?
Comparable? Yeah.
Is this my copy or do you?
Um I can make you a copy.
Yeah, I'll take one if you get it.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know what he's charging extra for that.
Hmm.
So otherwise, you know, you're gonna get the material yourself, form them up and do all that too so
Yeah.
by the time you do all that.
But it's hard to say without knowing because I've seen
Mm-hmm.
even like when we were looking at them trailers um you know, to get it used stairs for the trailers was like a thousand bucks a piece which
Mm-hmm.
you could probably build it with two hundred dollars of lumber and an hour and then it's worth it, you know.
Mm-hmm.
So that's I don't know what the
Yeah.
'Cause this the PD um labor and stuff is a bit more. Well, I guess it's similar to highway department.
Mm-hmm.
Does this whole thing include the co-mo generator that's behind building two?
No. We'll leave it at that.
Yeah, that's not touching any of that other than disconnecting it from here and the DPW.
Okay, so it's still going to to supply power someday?
Yeah, yeah.
Just for that area?
For the tower, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Or building two, yeah.
Yeah. And the reason we kinda did all this is 'cause winter is gone so we wanted to try to get it done like ASAP instead of keep going back and forth and whatever so
Okay, that's good.
We just kinda
So then the one thing that I have thought we are leasing the building up there and would it be proper for there to be some shared cost if there's improvements being made? And I talked with Jeff briefly and uh Jeff, you can say your thoughts on the value of it to you and whatever if you
Yeah. Hmm. Not a lot of value to me, but two times it can go home if the power goes out but so uh to me, I don't I don't need a generator. And I can do a little five thousand watt in order to run my little office if I had to.
Okay.
That's kinda where I stand but not that I can't work with you but I'm not gonna, you know, I'm not be on the conversation anyway.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so it's probably the three transfer switches are for the three different parts of the building.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that does not include Accra.
Sorry, if I can't, yeah. Okay.
On the inside.
Is that your thinking?
Yeah, it's only for the So there's yeah, 'cause there's four things and there there
Four, yeah.
There's the police department, the Yoke, Bellers Nichols plus the plus the common area which is the lights and
Yeah.
and the well and then the fourth one would be my office.
Okay.
On that, 'cause this it only has the three.
And obviously if we move out, it will come with us.
The generator, yes, yeah.
Yeah.
But so that might be something you might wanna talk with um Gemini.
Just figured after all that.
Right.
I mean, if there's gonna be a generator put back there. When I was talking with Peter about it, it's if we don't power Accura side, that means there's no water. Is that true?
The well is on the common.
Oh, so this doesn't common?
The well, yep.
Mm-hmm.
It should, I'm assuming it does. If it it's leaving one out, it's leaving up mine.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the parking the parking um street lights and the kind of well are part of the common of
Parking lot. Lights and
I see. Okay.
So the only thing your meter does is your office?
Sure, yes.
Okay. Just keep, I didn't know that.
Yeah, yeah, there's but Three meters, one for each office.
Excuse me.
And then of course one for the common.
And then the common. Oh, okay.
Alright, yeah, so it doesn't look like that's part of that plan now anyway, it's just like the the three the three sections.
Yeah. Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And you're good?
Okay.
Really fine, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I guess we can get some confirmation that that is actually what they're planning.
Yeah, 'cause I thought when we talked about it, it was
Yeah, it does agree there.
When I talked to Dave this, but oh, he made it sound, yeah.
Yeah.
That it was all the whole building.
That was gonna be the three.
Oh, okay.
And kind of Accra side.
Oh, okay.
It's kinda
Oh, 'cause you talked to him after I did, yeah.
They're they're both
You see how he writes it?
Yeah.
He writes two for police, one for house, one common space panel.
Right.
So he lists out four but he calls three.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know what that is. He's calls three twice.
Oh, and he's talking about the panels too, not the meters.
We're gonna do clarification on that building and then also how much the precast slabs are.
It's a beach.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah. Hmm.
Okay, and then
So on this, is there any other questions or concerns on the generators? For right now? Debbie, you're gonna look into funding sources?
Yep.
When I give you a buzz tomorrow or something?
Yep.
Alright. Alright, what else you got for us, Peter?
Um, I actually have a like would be uh involved a um a uh a new hire employee.
Okay.
So um I don't know if that is that supposed to go into non-public or
Is that what you're talking?
Specifically it would.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So that'll have to wait.
Yeah.
Okay, so wait till you go into the other non-public time?
Yep.
Okay.
Just for Ron's recording purposes, but yeah.
Yeah, yep, okay.
Did you have anything else?
Um I think that was just the two two, yep, there's still two subjects, generator, employee.
Alright. Um how did the dirt roads look after the weekend?
Uh
Did you get a chance to stick around?
Yeah, I didn't get a chance on all of them but uh most of them that I went down were not bad.
Okay.
And uh got Wayne Hill taken care of today so
Alright.
just in the bad spots so
Yeah.
Yeah, there was a lot of sections on that even that were really good as well, so
That's good.
Just didn't feel the need to
Got a lot of material going in there over the years.
Yeah, didn't feel the need to tear it up for nothing.
Yeah.
So
Alright.
Yep.
So, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, and then uh how's the road schedule, like the prep schedule for pavement going?
Um, we're looking I think a lot better now than I thought we were a while back so um we just gotta do a little bit more on Fox Farm and then uh we're gonna be moving over to Timbertop, Boming Out, Film Art to do the uh culverts over there as well.
Hmm.
And then we just have the catch bases to raise up on the Blueberry Acres section.
Have they given any tentative start date or?
Uh, he just told me like the end of August so that's all I have right now.
I think if there's anything else that then uh we had heard about a truck that's not it's in pretty rough shape. Right?
Um
Can see through the floorboard.
My people are
Yeah.
They're tru- oh trucks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, we we do have a uh uh pickup that's pretty tender right now.
Hmm.
Um, we patched up the floor right now to make it so we're not seeing the ground.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, that truck is sixteen years old and then our other pickup is twelve years old. So those are both are getting um showing signs of, you know, very well used, a lot of them.
Yeah.
So
Have you looked into the replacements for those?
Uh, not yet, I haven't.
Okay.
Uh, I've been trying to push forward on a on a replacement for a uh six-wheel dump truck.
Alright.
Just been having a lot of issues with between all four of them with the last year and and uh trying to see if I can get something to replace one of them before it's completely not usable or not passed inspection or something.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
The the dump truck
And we've had some back and forth on that.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Um, one of them cases where the Capital Reserve is underfunded.
Okay.
Didn't keep up like we saw at the PD last meeting.
Yeah.
That they're pretty much on par with the replacement schedule. The DPWs prices have not been maintained.
Yeah.
And I think he's looking next year if he was to be to buy a tru- new dump truck.
Uh Lou, please, like
Yeah.
Get a taste of his talking.
If he was to buy a new dump truck, he'd wipe it out.
Oh, really?
Wipe out the Capital Reserve and I one of my thoughts and I don't know if it's a good idea or not but to give it a little reset would be to just go straight warrant article for a dump truck and leave the Capital Reserve alone. And I don't know what you guys think of that but otherwise th- there's no catching up.
Yeah. What are those running now?
Four uh
The dump trucks?
Six-wheel dump truck is about uh
Yeah.
right around two sixty-five, two seventy
Yeah.
five, from there.
Yeah. Alright.
And there's not enough money to do it this year.
No.
So
Right.
he's waiting for next year to get to ninety thousand but you can see that we'll just wipe it.
Yeah.
There'll be nothing there for a pickup. And we've got two pickups that are a little sketchy as well, I don't know.
Alright, yeah, so I can see how that would work if you were able to if you were
Yeah, and it and it's, you know, it's just how everything is worked out with we've gotten the equipment side pretty good shape. Now it's, you know, the truck side is
Yeah.
you know, it just the time has gone by and they just haven't gotten replaced so then it's, you know, we're kinda just in this predicament because of, you know, taking a focus also the trucks and going over to the equipment side and then now
Captain moves equipment.
Yeah.
our truck side is suffering.
Yeah.
So, um
Yeah, that'll be good to happen.
Yeah, and all that equipment is not getting cheaper, it's getting more and more expensive every year, you know, it's just it's crazy. You know, it's like quarter of a million just for one truck, you know, it's like
Hmm.
it's crazy.
Yeah. Yeah, it's definitely gonna be good to have that CIP overhauled and active going forward, so, yeah.
Yep.
Mm-hmm. Definitely.
Um Yeah, so we're gonna have to stra- sounds like strategize a bit for, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you think that um dump truck will make it through this winter or like the one that you're
Yeah, I think we could try to get it through another winter.
Yeah.
Yeah, yep, but we do have inspection next month so we'll have to see what what they ultimately say, yeah, yep.
It happens, yeah. Alright.
Alright, so Oh, while we're on, I had one roundtable but I think it fits here is uh what's the status of Old Bieber Road? Have we transferred ownership?
Yeah, August first was the official date, so yeah.
So you get any calls yet?
Yep. No.
Now you're just jinxing.
When we were last out there, that whole area looked really good, you know, for for what we saw, it was I was very impressed.
Mm-hmm. Good.
Yeah.
Yep. Got it.
Hmm. Yeah, we're gonna look at that top coat for next year, right?
Yeah.
I think that was the plan, yeah.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Hmm, excellent. Thank you.
Yep.
I'm sure there's other things floating around but
Yeah. Yeah.
It's a busy department, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, alright.
Okay.
So next up, um we have that uh presentation for drawing down Waterland Pond. Did you, excuse me, what was your name again?
My name is Jacob Komer.
Jacob, nice to meet you.
Yeah. Great to meet you.
Yeah. Do you need any type of like
No, I'm just gonna say a few words and then um just kinda open for questions if that's right?
That's great.
Yeah, great, okay.
Yeah, yeah, floor's yours.
Great, thanks. Uh, so hello Uh, so hello everybody, my name is Jacob Comar. Um, myself along with my wife and my business partner, we bought the thirteen-acre lot up behind River Road there, which is uh the dam and then some of the river section below it as it goes to High Bridge um in September of last year. And um our intention is to basically refurbish the hydroelectric equipment that's there in order to get the power generation from Waterloo Pond Falls or Waterloo Pond Dam um up and running again, and it's been non-functional since twenty seventeen. They had a turbine explosion occur um from a overspeed event, which basically means um the dam was kicked off the grid at some point in time, uh and they did not have the correct or functioning safety mechanics that stopped the turbine, so the turbine just spun out of control and exploded itself from the inside out.
Cool.
It's uh way more exciting sounding than than the actual outcome was. So the previous owner um has had owned it from I thi- I think about twenty twelve or twenty thirteen until um I purchased it last, late last year. And um besides the 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 hydro house itself, the condition of the dam is actually really poor, it's it's quite poor. Um, we've had uh New Hampshire DES um as well as FERC, which is the um the Federal Energy uh Regulation Committee come out to take a look at it, cause they ultimately are the ones that provide us the license to operate the dam. Um, and actually jurisdictionally, the dam falls under FERC, it's it's a federally uh federally licensed dam. So, actions that we take on the dam have to, we have to run them by New Hampshire DES, um but ultimately um FERC is the operating and controlling body of of what happened to the dam. So anyway, um our plan up until a few weeks ago was to sort of do the following, our plan was focus on getting the hydro house operational. We've purchased a new turbine for the for the hydro house, requires new draft tubes, new steelworks. Um modifications to the building, the footprint of the building needs to change slightly because the dimensions of the turbine are different. Um, but on the whole, sort of focus our efforts in year one on repairing the dam, on repairing the 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 electrical generation equipment so that we can start generating funds to then refocus our efforts on improving the dam itself. Um, because as you can imagine, uh earthworks and concrete works surrounding the dam are expensive, quite costly, and honestly, this whole thing is a pet project for myself, there's no big company behind this or anything, it's just me, that's it. Um, so that was sort of the plan um until a few weeks ago when we discovered a leak on the right abutment that is new, it's new in the last six weeks. Um, we immediately notified New New Hampshire DES and FERC, they both sent representatives within twenty-four hours to come take a look at it. We also have had a third-party dam company come and take a look at it as well. Um, this leak is a small leak, um it varies between fifteen and forty-five gallons per minute um through the right abutment face. But importantly, the water is leaking through the interface between the concrete and the bedrock, which is really good. It means that it's not pulling material with it, it's not a section of the dam that's earthen, it's a it's a crack that has formed. It's actually, and we've now excavated some and have discovered, it's a hole that has been created by a root system from a tree due to improper management of vegetation near the dam over the past fifteen years.
That's a lot.
It's crazy, there is a dam, there's a root about this big that is just going through the wall of the dam. And there's water pouring through that hole.
Hmm.
So, um, as you can imagine, now our priorities have shifted in terms of that timeline of year one focus on generation equipment to start generating capital and then focus on the dam, we're kinda taking a detour on we need to address this problem with the leak so that it doesn't get worse and so that we understand exactly what the picture looks like. Then we'll go back to refocusing on getting the 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 hydro equipment operational. And then finally, we'll go back and look at the the dam surface as a whole and all of this sort of superficial um issues that the dam has, um and and bringing that sort of up to snuff. You have to remember that the dam was originally constructed in the early eighteen hundreds, it is a granite block foundation, it's a large stone dam that has been faced with concrete and the concrete facing looks terrible, if you go and look at it, there, most of the concrete facing has fallen off into the water. Um, there's massive amounts of spalling on the concrete, et cetera, but the the bones of the dam are a giant granite interlacing structure of granite blocks, and so um that's, I guess, why both DES and FERC have said it's okay if you if you don't, if you don't repair and remediate all these these the, all the concrete work immediately, you could take three years or five years to do that. Like the the bones of the dam are okay, um but that does need to be on your priority list, like in a in a medium sort of term. And so that's kind of what our what our focus is, so today I'm here to talk about the drawdown that we intend to do on August twenty-sixth. Um, we initially, when we contacted DES about this leak, they had given us a um initial permission to draw down immediately. Because a a leak in a dam can constitute an emergency and obviously you wanna do everything you can to sort of prevent any damage to the dam, damage downstream, et cetera. Um, but upon reviewing it, they looked at it and said, this isn't quite an emergency, we recommend that you go through the correct channels, which is to give the thirty-day notice to the to the town and the community um per the per the um the New Hampshire state law. And so um that's that's what we've done, um but to give you an idea of what we're doing, um so we're starting the drawdown on the twenty-sixth, which I believe is a Monday. We don't know, because we don't know what the weather is gonna do, um if it was as dry as it was a couple of weeks ago, we anticipate that the drawdown would take like four days. Um, with the incoming storms and sort of, we don't know what the next couple of weeks looks like, that drawdown period may take longer. Um, but the the dam itself um has two gates, so there's the dam has a spillway that looks like this, secondary spillway, and then a long abutment that goes over on the side like this. This spillway here is where the water flows over over the the crest. And if the dam is functioning correctly, there should never be water going over there because all the water is going through our turbine making money, right? That's the goal, but right now and for the last couple decades, water's been going over the spillway. Um, and there's there's sort of two ways to empty empty the 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 pond. There's a sluice way, um which is a, or a waste gate, which is about six feet below the surface level here. And then there's the main head gate, which is about six feet below and goes down to about twelve feet below. This head gate is about, it's it's about six foot by six foot giant square hole that goes into a six-foot pent stop that feeds.
Where's that one gone?
The water that goes through here goes through the turbine, and then there's a race, a tail race after the turbine, the hydro house that's there, that returns the water to the river downstream about a hundred feet. Um, the sluice gate here is just an opening in this concrete wall right next to the spillway that returns the water right, right where it would normally spill over the top of the spillway, it just returns it to the side right here. The problem that we have, and this is the big predicament that we're is that because the turbine's non-functional, we can't bring the water pressure behind the gate up because there's no way to stop the water behind it, and we can't open the head gate if there's a pressure differential between the outside and the inside, it's not a hydraulic head gate. In fact, we've tried and we've broken equipment, it's not designed to do it. This head gate is effectively not functional until we get the turbine operational. This waste gate has been broken since nineteen seventy-three. At least, the earliest record we could find of that waste gate being broken was nineteen seventy-three. So, um, we think that we've figured out a way to operate this waste gate, and what it means uh it's likely that we'll be able to get it open and not be able to get it closed immediately. So the reason that our drawdown period is for so long, right, we, and I I think applied for about two weeks, it's like fifteen days. Um, is that our intention is to remove the remnants of the waste gate that are here to get water flowing through this three-by-three hole at at down at the six-foot level. Um, that will take anywhere between four days and a week to drain. But then we need to repair this waste gate so that we can stop the hole back up so that Waterloo Pond can, the level on Waterloo Pond can raise again. Um, so we think that that, we're giving ourselves about a week to do that, to solve that problem, which we think is pretty reasonable, and the dam consultants that we had come in to take a look at it also think that that's a reasonable timeline to do that.
So does, is, are you draining the pond to?
Six feet.
Nothing, or just down to six feet?
Down six.
It's just down at six feet.
Yeah, exactly, so the total height of this spillway, um, well, there's a lot of silt here, but like the natural riverbed, the total height of this is like about twenty-eight feet. So proportionally, we're not talking that much, but when you look at the profile of the riverbed and of the pond, six feet might be here. Um, and it's it's V-shaped, so the the water embankment is, you know, the 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 area of the pond of the seventy-seven acres is gonna shrink pretty dramatically over that period of time. But we're unable to open it to twelve feet in the current, in the current situation, so this is the best that we're gonna do, but the good news is is that the leak itself is over here on this right abutment, and we think it's about anywhere between twelve and eighteen inches down from the surface. So, our efforts are gonna be open this up, and once it's open, it's open, there's nothing we can do to stop it until we get that gate repaired. Open this up, allow the water to start draining, once the water gets down to a level where we can see the crack, do a temporary fix on that crack, not not a long-term fix. Do a temporary fix on that crack, get the waste gate repaired, in the meantime, investigate the status of this head gate a little better than what we can currently do with the submersible cameras that we have. Um, because the water will be six feet lower, we'll be able to get a lot better view of it, um and make a plan to to do that repair. So the next time we do a drawdown, we'll be all set to replace this head gate with something that's hydraulically operated so that we don't need to be dependent on the turbine in order to operate it. Um, and uh if if the wa- if the waste gate solution that we put into effect in September is a temporary solution in that second drawdown, also address that, cause once we're in a position where both gates are operational, now we can do work on the dam without constantly having to draw it, to 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 draw it down. Um, you know, the last, the that second drawdown would give us the opportunity to reface the dam with concrete if that's what we choose to do at that time, but that's just gonna come down to cost. Initial estimates show it's over two hundred thousand dollars to do that concrete work, which we don't have the capital to do at this time. So, um, you know, we're gonna have to make a decision, are we gonna do it in piecemeal based on the conditions, the sections that are the worst? Are we gonna look at it when it's drawn down and say, yep, this can definitely hold on for another three years, so we're gonna wait till we get operational and collect the funds in order to do it? The the big portion of this drawdown, besides addressing the the crack, is is sort of exploration for us to figure out like, what is the actual condition of the dam? Cause we can't see any of it, it's all below silt and murky water.
So when you draw that down, is the, will the DES come out and look while it's down?
Uh, they can, the, so, um, Peter Doyon, who's the head of the dam bureau at DES, um, he's the one that came out um uh last week when we, when we started this process. Um, and uh and he's very aware of the schedule, and so he said that depending on what we, we're gonna be in communication with them, send them photos, et cetera, depending on what we find, they may wanna come out and take a look at it.
What about FERC, same?
Um, FERC's happy as long as no one's in danger, so.
Okay.
Uh, but we'll, uh, we have to send them um quarterly reports, um and we're pretty close with them, we'll probably send them photos as we're drawn down so they can make the decision if they wanna come out and look at it.
Cool. So the the drawdown is August twenty-sixth?
August twenty-sixth is when we'll start.
Yeah.
Um, we don't know how long it's gonna take to draw down, and if the if the weather continues like it is now, it it's possible that we may actually not be able to draw down, because the only, the only outlet that we have for water is this three-foot by three-foot hole here. So if the influx of water at that time, if there was a storm the day prior or whatever, it could take a week for that water to drain through the basin to get to us, and this may not be effective. But our hope is that it's dry enough that on August twenty-sixth, we could start that drawdown, and that by, of, you know, by effectively by the weekend, that we'll be low enough to the point where we can start working on this crack and and we can be evaluating the waste gate and that sort of thing. So, you know, in total, from the time that we start the drawdown on the twenty-sixth to the time that um we have the river completely stopped up and the water starts to return to level um should be fifteen days.
Fifteen?
Yeah.
Does the fire department know about this, cause they use that too?
Um, n- no.
Cause they draw water out of the pond, like trucks.
So, that's a, yeah, that's something good to know, I didn't know that, my understanding is that they did do that until about twelve years ago, but they don't anymore.
Just, I've seen him out there.
Okay.
May, May for training, I'm not sure if they.
Oh, that's good. I think that might just completely overgrown.
Is it, I don't know, I saw him down there not too long, a couple of months ago.
Yeah.
May- maybe like Sean said, maybe it is training.
I'd be happy to give him a call either, let's remember.
I'll ask, yeah, I can ask him.
Okay, that'd be great.
I can, and I have your email, so I can forward it to them if it works.
Perfect, great.
Yeah, a lot of the waters though, we can just go and just run some bulldozers and open up the pond, right Liz?
Make a little deeper by that.
Alright, get rid of some of all that tall grass so you can.
Close. So this process will move silt with it. If there's, in in locations in the in the ponds or in the river where silt has accumulated, this drawdown process will move tons and tons and tons of silt downstream with it, which to our advantage is gonna help open this up and show us a lot of what's going on here, but I imagine is of great benefit to other people that live on the lake that have had silt.
Just going down stream.
Not downstream, but hey, that's, DES is, that's.
Yes. Out of curiosity, how many kilowatts?
Hundred fifty KW. Yeah.
And so when would the second drawdown be?
That's a great, it's a, we, until we do our exploration, we won't know, um, but if I had to guess, just based on our big problem is uh flow of water, so starting like October first, the amount of water coming in is so great that like our opportunity to de-water probably will close until next summer. You know, we'll probably be looking at, yeah, at the earliest in May, probably even June, just because the left, the the flow of water is just so great that this little three-by-three can't do it. It would be really great if during this drawdown, we found a way to operate this gate, because that would be, that would open our options so much, but based on what we know, the two dams that are further downstream from here in Greenville um were were installed at the exact same time. All the rest of the equipment here is the exact same as the original equipment over there. We think we know exactly what this head gate is, and if it is what we think it is, it just needs to be replaced, and that's, that's gonna be a much longer process to get that manufact- inspected, manufactured and all of that.
Alright, and then going forward, um, I know very little about dam, dam maintenance and dam management and water flow. Um, but once the turbine's running, should people expect Waterloo Pond to be at the level that it's currently at or just a little bit lower, like? Or do you only run it during certain periods of the year?
Yeah, that's.
How would that go?
Yeah, that's a great question, so, um, there's a, there's a few different answers to it. We have an obligation to both DES and to fishing game, um, and to residents of the town to not operate it lower than it needs to be. Um, and so that's sort of like the the technical, like legal answer, but the reality is, is that for us, we make the most money when the wat- water level is the highest, because the difference in potential between the top of the water and the and the riverbed below is the is the greatest. So people that um operate their dams below the crest level are doing so really inefficiently. And um our intention is to replace this with a completely fully automated system so that we're never operating the dam more than two or three inches, within a, within a tolerance of two or three inches. Um, like, we're within our rights to operate it, I think, within eighteen inches of the crest level, which is like a lot, and people would notice that, people at home would definitely notice.
In the past, there were big fluctuations.
Big fluctuations, and I I've seen references in the um, in the in in the dam file with DES about complaints from people on the on the lake saying the the level's too low, I'm trying to have a Fourth of July party and and the water level's too low, et cetera, and our intention is to be really smart about how we operate it, because not only do we wanna cause at least problems, but from a financial perspective, it makes the most sense for us to operate the hot, eh, with with the wet water level as high as possible, so.
That's kinda like a pressure thing, like what is pushing through?
Yeah, exactly, yeah, 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 the 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 amount of pressure that you create by maximizing your head height is, it directly translates to to money.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we're trying to be smart, but I mean, the way that this used to be operated was someone had to go and look at it every day and say okay, what's the level, oh, I guess I should open this valve a little more or close this valve a little more, I mean, it's like archaic, you know? Um, our intention is to have a fully automated system that's looking at the water level, looking at the the weather conditions, um and looking at the market price of energy, you know, on a on a five-minute basis and making those corrections in an automated way every five minutes.
It's crazy.
Well, we're trying.
Technology's great when it works. And it's not dependent on any kind of electricity?
What do you mean?
The turbine or the hydro?
No, no, we, the, so, another really cool thing about this hydro generator is because we have, um, what's called a synchronous generator, uh, it's actually, this thing is so cool, it's from nineteen oh six, and it, the generator is, it's like this big in diameter, this giant wheel, um, that spins at two hundred and eighty revolutions per minute, it's this massive flywheel that moves. Um, we can actually help cold-start the grid with it, so if there's a blackout, the air source can call and say, hey, we need help cold-starting the grid, and we don't rely on any outside energy in order to do that.
Wow. Wow. That's pretty cool. When you, when you were talking about the fully automated on picture and computers or whatever, that would need electricity, but it would be drawing from?
Mm-hmm. From itself.
Itself.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Yeah, 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 there's there's service power provided from the utility, uh.